Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, 7:00 PM. I'm Fourth Ward Alderman Greg Adamson. Mayor Gallagher is not present for tonight's council meeting as he is attending the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative Annual Meeting. Councilmember Nauman and Palczynski are attending virtually this evening. With the absence of Mayor Gallagher and the virtual participation of Mayor Protem Nauman, I ask for a motion to name me as chair for the purposes of presiding over tonight's council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. With that, that was, I was worried about that one. I told him I'd be happy to go sit down again in my, my normal seat. With that, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sacksar?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Palczynski?
Here.
Adamson?
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Now, if everyone would please remove any hats or headdresses you may have and join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation given by Alan Ross, Executive Director of the Jewish Federation of the Quad Cities. Please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our God and God of our ancestors, lest this country and all who dwell within it, help us to experience the blessings of our lives and circumstances to be vigilant, compassionate, and brave. Help us to taste the sweetness of liberty, to not take for granted the freedoms won in generations past. Source of all life, guard our leaders with righteousness, that they may use their influence and authority to speak truth and act for justice. May all who dwell in this country enjoy its freedoms and be protected by its laws. May this nation use its power and wealth to be a voice for justice, peace, and equality for all who dwell on earth. May we be strong and have courage to be bold in our action and deepen our compassion, to uproot bigotry, intolerance, and violence in all its forms, to celebrate the many faces of God reflected in the wondrous diversity of humanity, to welcome the stranger, and to honor the gift of those who seek refuge and possibility here as they have since before this nation was born. But just as well up like waters and righteousness like the mighty stream, and let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Alan. We have a proclamation tonight for National Hispanic Heritage Month, and for this, I would ask Jen Hart, board member of the Greater Quad City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, to join me in the center of the room.
Hello.
Hi.
From the office of the mayor, whereas the Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce strives to support, promote, enhance the growth and success of local businesses and to leverage the assets, contributions, and unique Hispanic culture identity to generate new businesses, and whereas the diverse Hispanic community has continued to build viable partners within the Quad Cities to build relationships with Hispanic entrepreneurs who are willing to take a chance, just as has been part of the rich history of the United States with immigrants from previous generations, and whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the City of Bettendorf recognizes the contributions made by and the importance of the presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States, and whereas the City of Bettendorf does recognize, honor, and thank the courage of those who went from Hispanic heritage to defenders of this great country of ours, to those who were killed missing in action or prisoners of war, to those who were emotionally, mentally, or physically scarred, and those who were able to return home safely. And whereas today's 62.1 million people in America are of Hispanic or Latino origin, we in the City of Bettendorf would like to celebrate the Hispanic culture. Now therefore, I, Greg Adamson, Chairman of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim the Bettendorf Community in the Bettendorf Community, September 15th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month, pioneers of change shaping the future together.
You're here.
Here.
Comments?
Thank you so much for your support and your partnership. I am a fourth generation Mexican-American. My grandfather and all of my uncles served in the U.S. Army. My brother-in-law is a great pride. I'm very thankful for this opportunity, and thank you again for your partnership and support.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Those are fun. Okay. We're now on to public request of council. If there's anyone here that would like to be heard on an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity to be heard. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Try not to be repetitive. Please refrain from outbursts like clapping and yelling, and be respectful with your comments. Please approach the podium in the back, state your name and address, and then you may address city council. Anyone here for public request of council? Seeing no one, I will close public request of council, move on to our first public hearing. This will be a public hearing for items six and seven on the agenda. Our first public hearing this evening is to approve the fiscal year 2025 application for Federal Transit Administration Section 5310 financial assistance for this item. We will hear from our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt. Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Each year, by State Regional Commission, suballocates Federal Transit Administration dollars across the three Quad City area transit systems. We are required to submit, or have a public hearing and submit the grant, and it does require council approval to do so.
Okay. Any questions from council? Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay, let's open the public hearing with regard to the fiscal year 2025 application for Federal Transit Administration Section 5310 financial assistance. Anyone here that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, let's close that public hearing. Go to Councilmember Jaeger, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving fiscal year 25 application for Federal Transit Administration Section 5310 financial assistance. I move approval of that resolution.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sacksar?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye. Can we unanimously pass that item, items? Thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to the next hearing. This would be reference items eight and nine on the agenda. Public hearing regarding the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of $9,500,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes. For this item, we'll hear from our Finance Director, Jason Chat.
Thank you, Your Honor. On tonight's consent agenda, there are a couple of items approving the construction contract for the Spencer Creek Lift Station project. In order to finance that project, we have reached out to the, to take advantage of Iowa's Clean Water State Revolving Fund program. The program provides favorable loan terms for wastewater projects, including below-market interest rates. Most recent rate that I've heard is about 2.61%, so that's very favorable in this market. A public hearing is required to issue the debt, and we will proceed with taking additional action after the public hearing.
Any questions for Jason from council? Michelle, did we publish any notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to the loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of $9,500,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's close the public hearing and go to Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution instituting proceedings to take an additional action for the authorization of a loan and disimbursement agreement and the issuance not to exceed $9,500,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sacksar?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski? Palczynski?
Must have lost him.
Adamson?
Aye. Thank you, Michelle. Council has approved the loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $9,500,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes. Next item is a public hearing, item 10 and 11 on the agenda regarding the sale of city-owned property for the I-80 and Middle Road Interchange Project. For this, we will ask our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt, for an explanation. Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city owns 22 and a half acres of undeveloped property at the northeast intersection of Middle Road and I-80, and as part of the I-80 and Middle Road Interchange Project, the DOT needs to acquire 2.07 acres for the extension of Indiana to the north. The property has been appraised, and the review appraisal was also completed in accordance with federal highway procedures. Staff will continue to work with Iowa DOT on this interchange project, and we see no issues with this sale.
Plus, we get a new interchange out of it.
That is correct.
It's a good thing. Any questions for Brian from council? Okay. Michelle, did we publish, publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence?
No, we did not.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing with regard to the sale of city-owned property for the I-80 and Middle Road Interchange Project. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing no movement, let's close the public hearing. Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the sale of city-owned property to the Iowa Department of Transportation for the purchase price set forth in the purchase agreement for the I-80 and Middle Road Interchange Project. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
It's a good project.
Seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sacksar?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye. Thank you, Michelle. Council has unanimously approved the sale of the city-owned property for the I-80 Middle Road Interchange Project. Another public hearing, reference items 12 and 13 on the agenda. Public hearing regarding the rezoning of property on the southwest corner of Forest Grove Drive and Middle Road from A1 Agriculture Urban Reserve District to UHI Urban High Intensity requested by Genesis Health System. For this, we ask our Community Development Director, Mark Hunt, to give a presentation.
Taylor Besswood and I will give you a brief presentation. I know you've had some presentations provided to you previously, and we'll try to cut the slides down as much as possible, but there is a little bit to get through here.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just kind of set the table here, so we have a large hospital complex coming into the Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive on the west side, southwest side of that that will need to rezonate to do that. It is an agricultural rezoned area right now. Remember, agricultural zoning is our holding area, so everything kind of starts agriculturally zoned, if you will, and it has to be rezoned once development occurs as it, as it moves into the edges of our city. So that's where we're at today. Taylor will give you a few slides. I think it will refresh your memory, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Taylor, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a request from Genesis Health to rezonate roughly 51 acres from A1 Agricultural Reserve to UHI Urban High Intensity. This is a development character area. It's a little different than what we're used to. This is a master planned area with a mix of uses to include a hospital, healthcare center, medical office buildings, medical facility, street parking structure, and commercial retail. Existing surrounding uses include farmland, Center for Alcohol and Drug Services, and a church all over the west. Looking at our future land use and zoning, the future land use map designates this area a mixture of uses, community commercial, urban activity, mixed transitional, and greenway. And as Mark mentioned, this is currently A1 urban or agricultural. One analysis the staff does when we receive a petition for rezoning is looking at the compatibility of that future land use map to the rezoning. As I mentioned, there's a mixture of uses here, so staff broke down what is actually included in this rezoning request and how it is consistent with our recently adopted future land use map. As you note, the red box on the very north is commercial. This would be, could be an Euclidean zoning, be something like C3 or C2, and that is located in our red and orange areas on the future land use map. Area two is where that hospital will be, and it will be located on the eastern side on Middle Road. That's where also a high C3 area could go, but transitions farther to the west to a transitional area. The number three, it would be, could be an office, business park, commercial zoning district, but that includes medical offices, a mixture of uses of medical offices. Number four, it's more of a patient services, so that could be a number of different uses, a number of zoning districts, but really on the future land use map, that was intended to be higher intensity along Middle Road and transitioning to the west. So you see the theme here, intensity on the east side along Middle Road, and then transitioning farther west when we go into adjacent either future residential or farther away residential, existing residential. And then farthest to the south, we have a more commercial retail, a large tract of it, and this borders Hopewell Avenue and Middle, so this is a really good transition, true to a single story, a lot what you see probably to the north near the bed, like some of those type of products and the uses would be seen similar probably in like a C2 district. Combining all these into that DCA master plan is a much more beneficial for the developer and for the city to kind of see the whole scale of the project. It's going to be a long project to develop, but it helps, you know, give public comment and city comment on where things are located, also to help transition buffer different types of uses, parking, landscaping, et cetera. Just wanted to show you this map to help envision the compatibility. Actually, looking at the master plan, it's mentioned it has a mixture of uses. The plan proposes public roads connecting to Forest Grove Drive and Middle Road. There will be proposed roundabout. Initially, staff commented for the roundabout to be located farther south, but after further review, the city engineer likes where the area is, and the future road to the east would connect to any development that is east of there. It might have to swerve a little south. Sidewalks, trails, landscaping, buffering, detention ponds are also all identified in the plan, so you're seeing a good large detentory ponds located on the adjacent boundary to the west and also to the northeast, also bike trails, sidewalks, and then those public roads.
And we're using the term master plan, and it really is a master plan, but again, it's not a site plan. So this is, this is a master, this is a concept plan. We get that early on in the face of what is developed character. This type of zoning lets us have a lot of input early on from a city perspective. We don't just create a box and say whatever fits in the box and go into it. We get to see what they want to put in the box early on. We make comments, but yet you still have a site plan to come if this body chooses to rezonate. This is going to be the precursor to that site plan. It's going to really drive the direction of the way that site plan goes. Things could change. They could change our city side. We may find something as we do more analysis, but we have a lot of information up front to look at as we then move into the site plan phase should a rezoning occur.
Thank you, Mark. Another component of that submit going through a DCA master plan rezoning, there's additional requirements for that submission. The master plan was submitted, as I just showed in the previous slide. Also, character and architectural elements are required to be submitted, so the applicant Genesis and their engineering from Shifatary has submitted a palette of different character and design elements that are very similar or modern aesthetics, similar, I think, to their, some of their other campuses, lots of glass, modern architectural sod, et cetera. So you kind of see what that character will look like and how it can, will be fit into some of the other new developments going in on the southeast side of Middle Road and Forest Grove, and of course, the TDK Sports Complex and the IRT area. Staff does a number of, goes through a number of criteria for a normal rezoning, and this just shows that seven-step process, all contained within the staff report, and they were all in the affirmative for that rezoning analysis. I won't go through individually, but that's a summary of those. And then in addition, with that map, that DCA rezoning, there's a, as mentioned, there's another eight criteria that are addressed, and the applicant has either submitted sufficient evidence to address each of these items through their master plan or submitted narrative that kind of explains the compatibility, which staff and the Plains and Zoning Commission have concurred with. So all those have been addressed by the applicant and addressed and reviewed by the Plains and Commission and staff, and we concur to that, what's submitted meets those criteria. Going after the recommendation, the applicant, I will note that the applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting on August 12th, 2024, that was attended by neighbors in the, in the area. This did receive a positive staff report, and the Plains and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the rezoning on August 21st. Any questions?
Questions? Any questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Jaeger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, I think you're aware that the city has received a letter from an adjoining property owner with some site plan concerns. I want to verify with you that the site plan is not before the council this evening. This is a zoning matter.
That's correctly stated. This is a zoning matter. This zoning matter, the nature of it happens to include a very detailed concept plan. That's not a final site plan, and a final site plan process is required per code should you make the rezoning.
And just personally, I'd ask that you be aware of and considerate of the concerns of adjoining property owners as we look at the final site plan, even if we cannot fully resolve those concerns. I'd at least want to know that we are aware of them and we're considering them.
Yes, very much so, Mr. Jaeger. In fact, Taylor's already done some working at ways to mitigate concerns related to parking structures, and we're looking at what best practices are in other cities. There's some really neat ideas out there, so we're interested in jumping into that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, sir. Lisa, anything?
I'm curious, what were some of the public comments at that meeting? And then also on the retail area, was there any discussion as far as what we're talking since this is medical?
So the public, you're talking about the neighborhood meeting was attended roughly by, I think, six or seven individuals, really talking about some of the developed areas and/or a few eminent developed areas. So we do have a recent approval by council for rezoning of a tract of land for townhomes and apartments here. Just more questions, I would say, about how, how that will fit in, kind of reacting to the proposal. There was no, nobody from the direct west, which is currently farmland, but shown its future, future use as a residential on the land use map. And then east, we did not, I believe, have anyone attend east of Middle Road. That really is, really is a lot of questions.
Yeah, with memory serves me, I think there was one, maybe a mother and son, adult son and maybe older mother to the south that came. They just had questions in general. They did not raise any serious objections, I'll tell you that. We did get some basic questions about the development process. Staff was able to answer those, and then.
Timing as well.
Yeah, timing.
Timing.
Landowners to the, future landowners or current landowners that have development opposed to the northwest, they attend, had some questions how it may impact vertical management.
Right.
Staff tried to answer those questions on site, but it was.
Okay. Okay. And then the retail area, that's going to be medical focused?
Sure. The applicant has indicated that right at this point, this would be owned entirely by Genesis, and this is shown as retail, so retail is a general term, but what you would see, and I think in some of our, something like Shops of the Woodlands is a good example. You have maybe urgent care type of facilities, some of those smaller units, that kind of nature, we're thinking single story. Again, this isn't to a site plan, plan stage yet. There could be a possibility for, to, you know, break off ownership of that land.
That's what, that's the first thing that came to my mind, is breaking off and selling.
But really, that's a large area of identified as commercial, square footages are included, so that kind of goes with what we've seen developed in all those other commercial corner areas of Bettendorf and of course, TDK Sports Complex on the southern side.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything on this side? I have a comment and a question. Did this, is this going to, and I apologize if you've already told me this, I don't remember. Is this going to accelerate the development of Middle Road? Get, you know, the four lane?
I think it's, I think it's a great question, and I know that we've maybe talked about it a little bit. I think there is probably going to happen, remember, this is now all going to happen in one day.
Sure.
So we're at a rezoning, and for this 50 acres you've developed is probably three to seven years, you know, for full development. Staff, I know, is working together to look at options for the widening of Middle Road. And I know the city engineer and the finance director have talked about plans for that. So yes, there will be an impact on Middle Road, but we do have plans.
Sometime.
We have time, and we have plans in place to require the funding should we need it.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just really quick, I'd like to support Mark a little bit on this as well, and Mr. Plane may jump in also if he prefers to, or Mr. Schmidt. This development, the QCR Holdings development on the east side of Middle Road, the exponential growth we are seeing out there, it is our intention to talk to you in the goal-setting session this fall about alternative potential funding opportunities. We could have to move this along. Is this development in and of its own causing us to look at this differently or move it along? I would suggest not so much, but collectively, this entire area, growth is happening a lot faster than we anticipated it happening.
Right.
And we're going to try to find an expeditious way in which we can get Middle Road constructed here in the very near future.
Yeah. I just think it would be, if we can, if we can afford it, to have that done without, instead of having all this built, new, new buildings and new businesses, and then try to go back in and.
Yeah. Counselor Curran, Decker, Brian, myself, Jason, we've looked at a potential option in the scope of urban renewal that may be able to benefit us, and we'll talk to you in goal-setting about that, but it is definitely going to be a high priority as we move forward.
Thank you. And then one comment, I'd like to thank the Genesis Health Systems for choosing Bettendorf for their new facility. It's a, it's a great town, and it's a, it's a great company, so thank you. Thank you so much for choosing Bettendorf.
Your Honor, a follow-up question?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. My question related to the development of Middle Road, do we have the right of way?
We do, I believe.
100% yes.
Thank you.
That it, Jerry?
That's it.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I would remind the council that we did get a $1.5 million roughly earmark through Congresswoman Miller Meeks' office for the design of Middle Road, and we currently have engaged a consultant engineer to prepare design of the four-lane facility, and that work is underway. And as Jeff indicated, we'll beginning, we'll be beginning to talk to you about what our finance options are. So we're currently under design right now, and we're planning for this project to come in probably in the next five years or less in our CIP if we can make the maneuvers work. if we can make the maneuvers work.
Thank you, sir. Taylor, Mark, thank you very much. Any questions for Mark or Taylor? Any more questions at all?
Nick or...
Oh, I'm sorry. Nick or Scott, any questions?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
Yes, we did. We received one piece of communication from Unity Point Health, Sean Morrow, president for the Quad Cities location.
Okay.
And all of which you have seen.
Yes, we've all seen that.
Previously.
Your Honor, I move that that letter be included as part of the record as if read.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Okay. Let's open the public hearing with regard to rezoning property on the southwest corner of Forest Grove Drive and Middle Road. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's close the public hearing. Go to Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map for property generally located south of Forest Grove Drive, west of Middle Road, and north of Hopewell Avenue, A1 Agricultural Urban Reserve District to UHI Urban High Intensity District. I move approval of the ordinance at the first reading.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Okay. Seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle. Council has unanimously approved the first reading of an ordinance rezoning property on the southwest corner of Forest Grove Drive and Middle Road. Move on to item 14, ordinance. Third and final reading of an ordinance reducing the speed limit to 40 miles an hour on Criswell Street from Forest Grove Drive to Valley Drive. This item is for Councilmember Brown to present.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a third and final reading of an ordinance amended in Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1-285, speed restrictions by reducing the speed limit to 40 miles per hour on Criswell Street from Forest Grove Drive to Valley Drive. I move approval of this ordinance at the final reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Does this, I do have a question. Does this, we'll still have a school with the new school. I think there might be two new schools out there, but on Criswell, there's going to be a new school starting next August. Do we have the, everything in place to put in the speed signs and all that sort of stuff?
I'm not, you go ahead, Brian. Yeah. Go ahead. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Your Honor. We haven't seen any plans at this point and know exactly where that location's going to be. But obviously, when those plans come forth, we'll evaluate the corridor as far as a traffic standpoint and make recommendations once we see a final plan.
What, okay, I'm talking about Joan of Arc, St. Joan of Arc out on Criswell. We know where, we know where that's at.
Yeah, we're fine there because we have a 10-foot wide recreational trail on the north side in front of, or just right on, just on the north side.
Do you need a school zone?
No, I mean, I'm talking about...
School zone, speed limit.
Right now, it's currently at 25 miles an hour.
Okay.
But we can put school signs up there if needed.
And the, and the speed indicator?
If it requires it, yeah. If it requires it. Yeah, and I would think that the speeds, it'll be on Hopewell. I don't think it'll, it won't be on Criswell. Criswell would be too far away from it. There's certain regulations.
Oh, sure.
So the speed, the school speed zone will be in front of it, which would be Hopewell, not Criswell.
Okay, Hopewell, okay, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Please call the roll. Michelle?
Brown?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Next item is the third and final reading of an ordinance amending City Code Title 8, Chapter 4, for the purpose of establishing the downtown SMID boundary and term. The item is for Councilmember Saxer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Title 8, Public Utilities and Services, Chapter 4, self-supported municipal improvement district for the purpose of establishing the downtown Bettendorf self-supported municipal improvement district boundary and term. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
May have a motion and a second, any discussion? Talked about this several times. Seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Aye.[1717.61]